One more, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Now he's dead.
I'm not using it.
Chief Dan, that's where he hit it.
Well, I don't know what I wrote tonight.
I don't either.
Hope it's alright.
Another night, son.
I didn't say it.
Yeah.
I don't think Roy was, this wasn't that stuff. He wasn't there.
I feel lonely down here by myself.
Trying to give him a call, see if he's there.
Everyone is ready? Ready? Good evening, welcome to the September meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman. Uh, we'd like Mr. Johnson to give us a for indication, please.
Hello Father, we come at this hour just trying to turn a few things to thee, 'cause thou have been too good to each and every one of us. You have brought us from a mighty long way. Through a many dangerous tortoise now, Lord, you have brought it all. And I just ask you this night that you just bless the Father. Bless everyone on the sound of my wee voice, for whoever blessed next and neither. Keep us all in your keeping. And whatever we do here this night, let it be pleasanter than thee. Thee in all blessing we thank in the mighty name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Mr. Moore, could you give the pledge?
Salute, pledge. Our prayers are allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Coleman, roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
They're all present but Mr. Armstrong.
Okay. Do we have any public comment as to items on the agenda? Approve previous minutes, regular meeting, August thirteenth. I believe you have your minutes in your package.
May I make a motion for the approval of those minutes?
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shaw, and, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Locke, second by Mr. Johnson and Mr. Shaw. Mr. Moore, Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Special meeting, August nineteenth, twenty fifteen.
May I make that motion of approval of those minutes?
We have a motion by Mr. Locke.
I second that motion.
Second by Mr. Moore, any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Financial, financial committee report, Mr. Shaw.
Uh, Mayor, uh, we have reviewed the bills and claims for the month of August, and, um, I move that we accept that at this time.
We have...
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shaw to accept Resolution fifteen sixteen twenty-eight, a second by Mr. Locke. Any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Now, we have a opening on the zoning board. Uh, zoning board of adjustments, should I say. And I would like to appoint Mrs. Charleston Burnett to serve on that board.
I make that motion, Mayor.
May I second it?
We have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Locke, any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Also appoint, appoint a commission to the Barrister Historical District Commission, and reappoint Mr. Jacob Post. He's, he's serving now, but his time is running out, and he has agreed to stay on the board.
Mayor, I make that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Moore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw, any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Now, I'd like to act to expand the agenda. Uh, we have a couple of ordinance here to deal with the airport, and I need to expand the agenda now.
May I move?
I second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Okay, uh, ordinance... Ordinance number fifteen forty-two thirty-four. In ordinance of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of City of Bastrop to repeal ordinance fifteen... Is that the one?
Mm-hmm.
Fifteen.
Fifteen forty-two thirty-three, to allow for amending and reinstating ordinance sixteen, Code of Ordinance for the City of Bastrop authorizing the Planning Commission, this is a different one, when convened to exercise its power as the zoning committee to grant special use permit for non-confronting use in locations under certain conditions and addressing other related matters with respect thereof. And this is ordinance for the zoning committee. We passed ordinance last month, and we passed it with a variance. We, what we're doing is repealing that ordinance and introducing the ordinance for special use permit is the ordinance that we should have had last month. And it's a little difference from a variance. This is... Let's see, can I explain the, um... Breadhouse on McRae. For, I guess, the last fifty years, it's been a business. Once it went down, or closed down, it sit down for over a year. When it came back under zoning, it could not be used for a business anymore. Well, that building can only be, it's too big for a house, it can be a residence, not the way it is. So what it is, this special use permit would allow that building to be used for just what it was, a business. And that business, right, they want to open a, they open a, I guess, a gymnasium in the neighborhood. That's all it is, a dance studio, or something like that. And that's what this various, uh, special use permit does. But it has to go, each one of them has to go before the zoning board to be approved. What is your pleasure?
Introduction only.
Introduction. Introduction only. Okay, that's it. No, there's no bid on it tonight, just introduction. Okay, motion. Also, Resolution fifteen sixteen twenty-nine, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Department of Transportation Fair Aviation Administration, Project Three Twenty-two dash zero zero four dash zero one five dash two zero one five for runway safety and earthwork drainage and lighting improvement at the airport. And this is, uh, this is, uh, the resolution authorizing the work. What is...
And Mayor, actually, you probably could speak more intelligently about this than I. I didn't make the bid opening. Uh, but I do have the paperwork from Denman, and it looks like R.D. Owens Construction Incorporated was the lowest bidder on this project. Is this not the, what you're covering?
No, this is authorized. This is a resolution to, that we can do the work. A resolution allowing the city to get the work done.
Really?
Right.
Okay.
Huh?
Right. Just stay right there.
Just stay right there, you'll be up next. This, this is authorization for the city to go out and get the bids, so the work can be done.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Y'all are giving the mayor permission to ask for the money for the grant to pay for the work. Through FAA.
I move the mayor, I move the mayor that we accept that.
Second.
Any other discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Now, the motion, let's see, br... This is, uh... Let's see where it is.
Fifteen forty-two thirty-four.
Fifteen. Okay, and the bid, and this discussion action for bids for earthwork, drainage, lighting improvements for Morehouse Memorial Airport, now.
Now, okay. Uh, we did have, uh, three companies submit bids for the project, and, uh, the low bid was R.D. Owens Construction Incorporated out of West Monroe, and they came in at, if I figure's right, four hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-seven, which was probably about a hundred and thirty thousand lower than the next lowest bidder. And, um, the Denman area recommends that we accept their bid for the work, and I would have to agree with them on that.
Now, Ms. Coleman, this is a grant, right?
Yes.
It's paid a hundred percent between the FAA and the State Department of Transportation.
And this contractor, where's he located?
In West Monroe, Louisiana.
West Monroe?
Yes, sir.
Now, Denman was supervised the work?
Yes. Correct, they would.
Mr. Ellington, when was the work start on this project?
We're not exactly sure yet. Uh, it'll just depend on when the contractor can get started, and really gonna depend on how we work it in with Flying Tigers' operation as well. So we're gonna have to work with them to try to keep them going and flying while still accomplishing the work. Hopefully as soon as possible, but we're gonna maybe have to vary the start date, and even the construction times during the day to, to try to fit around their schedule to keep them flying.
Flying Tigers is actually a new business out of the airport, a business of flying school. It teaches agriculture, flying and certify people from all over the United States, or should I say, all over the world, to fly. So what, they're, we're working with, keeping, doing his school so he can keep teaching, and we can get the work done at the same time, that's what he's talking about, Flying Tiger. If you get a chance, just look out there, you'll see more planes at the airport now, and you will soon see helicopters flying. He's teaching, training helicopter pilots and all at our airport. What is your pleasure on these bids?
I make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shaw. Any other discussion? All for?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now, ordinance fifteen forty-two thirty-five, in order to repeal ordinance fifteen forty-two thirty-one A, to allow for the res- restoration and reenactment of ordinance number six twenty, six twenty-one, six twenty-two, six twenty-three, six twenty-four, six twenty-five, six twenty-six, six twenty-seven, and six twenty-eight, to provide for the administrative condemnation of buildings and structures determined to be in dilapidation, dilapidated or dangerous conditions that endanger the public's welfare and other matters with respect. And, uh, Mr. Lawrence hasn't been here, is not here, but what he's trying to do is repeal this ordinance and redo the ordinance. We, I think we did this ordinance last month. And, uh, what it is, is to repeal ordinance we did last month and go a different way, same ones but a different way.
May I move for the repealing of, of that ordinance fifteen forty-two thirty-one A?
Both of these are introductions.
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 We don't have to do it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can do it next week.
Yeah, these are all introductions.
This is for information, right?
Okay. Ordinance fifteen forty-two thirty-six, in order to reenact Code of Ordinance, section number six twenty, six twenty-one, six twenty-two, six twenty-three, six twenty-four, six twenty-five, six twenty-six, six twenty-seven, and six twenty-eight. Conditions on the repeal, conditioned on the repeal of ordinance number fifteen forty-two thirty-one, to restore previously amended and repealed sections of the Code of Ordinance to allow for the administrative condemnation of buildings and structures determined to be in dilapidated or dangerous conditions that endanger the public welfare and other matters with respect thereof. This is also introduction, and it's redoing the ordinance that we repealed last month.
Okay.
Okay. Now, okay. I also need to ask the, for the board to expand the agenda for liquor permits. We didn't have it on the agenda, but I need a motion to expand.
I make that motion, Mayor.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Okay, Chief?
Mayor, Councilman, we have one new permit, uh, for Speedmark Number One of Bastrop, thirteen oh one North Washington Street. It's a Class A retail dealer, it'll be off-premises license. This'll be a new apply. As far as the police department's concerned, I've reviewed the application, I see no problem. I believe this gonna be porters, it's just, uh, reissuing because of a new owner. So I think that's what we're dealing with there.
I make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion by Mr. Moore? To, for the license of Speedmark Number One of Bastrop.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Shaw, any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Thank you. Now... Okay, Mr. Hickson, Mr. Hickson. Now, Mr. Rick Hickson, Morehouse Parish School Board Improvement.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, other folks from the administration, uh, thank you very much for allowing the Morehouse Parish School Board to come and give you a brief update of some things that we feel are very important for the community and the direction that we kinda wanna go. Before I get into the slide presentation, I wanna say that, uh, back in January, when the new board were sworn in, it became very clear that our school system needed to have a drastic change. And I, I think we all knew that it's gonna be a change, it's not gonna happen quickly. It's probably gonna take a couple of years to do what we need to do. But, uh, I'll go ahead and, uh, get going here. Our annual operating budget, now this, this does not include, this doesn't include our lunch fund and, and our title, Title One and Title Two programs, but our general fund budget, uh, every year our operating budget is forty-two to forty-two and a half million dollars. Since IP closed, um, we have struggled to balance our budget every year. It's a, it's a constant battle every year trying to get the, uh, budget balanced. We're, um, the only way that I think we can get to a balanced budget on a continuing basis is to consolidate our school system. We've got to get down from the total number of campuses, school campuses that we're operating, from ten campuses down to at least five. We, um... In May, when school discharged, we had, uh, right at forty-four hundred total students in the system. And the money that we get from the state, we, we get so much money from the state per student. As long as we don't, as long as we can maintain our student population and don't lose any more students, and possibly grow our student population, that will help, that obviously will help our budget. But we could, uh, um, if we consolidate and reduce the number of schools, and just based on some rough numbers, um, we could possibly have six and a half, seven million dollars in our budget at the end of the school year on June thirtieth, when we close our books. And that would be a tremendous benefit to the school system and the community. We, uh, the issues that we have to address, and we have to address these issues. There's no way to get around it, hide from it, hide from it, run from it. Recruitment and retention of certified teachers. We get certified teachers in our system, they're here for a couple of years, and then they go to a system somewhere else that pays a little bit more money. And so we're, we're, we're like a training ground. Allen knows what I'm talking about. Uh, we're like a training ground. And we've gotta get beyond being a training ground and get certified classroom teachers that are gonna be career-minded, that are from, that are from our community, that are gonna stay here. And, uh, transportation is another big, big issue. We're, we're operating about forty-eight school buses. If we do this, we should be able to get down to about thirty-five buses. If we can eliminate, if we can eliminate thirteen buses, we eliminate the insurance on thirteen buses, we eliminate the fuel for thirteen buses. We also make our transportation system much, much more efficient. Because we could actually go to a neighborhood, fill the bus up, and take them to one school and drop them off. Uh, I'm sure y'all have heard some of the stories about transportation in the last couple of years. And I'm just gonna give you a generic example. You got a second grade girl and a fifth grade boy, that are brother and sister, and they live in the same house. And they get picked up at their bus stop. And that bus has to go to a school, and they drop that little second grade girl off. She's gotta get on another bus to go to the school that she's supposed to end up at. And this will eliminate all of that. Because I know many of you have seen two buses in the same neighborhood. It happens a lot. But a lot of that can be eliminated. But, uh, uh, physical condition of the school buildings. I went to Eastside in the fifties, and, and the Southside. And those schools were old then, but a lot of these buildings still have single pane windows. They're cold in the wintertime, and they're hot in the summer. And the school systems maintenance department, they get called every day to go to one of these schools for a heating and cooling issue, a computer issue, whatever it might be. And, uh, so it keeps our, it keeps our maintenance people very busy. Loss of MFP funds, uh, due to, uh, decrease in our population, that's another thing. We've lost, on average, about one and a half classrooms a year, uh, since meal closed. And I don't remember, I don't know what it was before then. But, uh, those are the issues that we have to address. And, uh, uh, the other thing that we've got, I got a little bit ahead of myself, a lot of these old school buildings still have, still have some asbestos in them. So that, that's an issue too. But it's something that can be dealt with. The, uh, um, a lot of the wiring in some of these older elementary school buildings, is very, might even be out of code. Some of it's got cloth insulation on the wiring. And, uh... This is a map, basically, of what we have now. You can see Bickman, you can see Bickman Charter School way up there at the top. See Delta Junior High over here. And then you see the cluster of schools right here in town. And of course Pine Grove is, you know, it's not quite as far from town as the other two, but, um, that's, uh, what we've gotta do is try to consolidate a little bit more here, you know, in the city and just outside the city. The solution is, uh, as I said a while ago, to reduce the number of campuses that we're trying to operate. We, we'll never get the budget down if we don't consolidate the schools. You can drive, you can leave Morehouse Parish and go any direction, and you're gonna see new schools. Almost every business leader, business leaders in the community, you go to any other town in this country, the size of Bastrop, and they will tell you very quickly that the heart, the heartbeat of the community is the school system. And if you don't have a good school system, uh, you're not gonna have economic growth. It will not come. The, uh, schools that obviously would stay in the system, uh, Bickman Charter School. Bickman Charter School is, is growing, and it's doing very well. Uh, and it's gonna be better next year and the year after. And Bickman Charter School is chartered by the parish. Now, there's other charter schools across the state that are chartered by the state. And those parishes don't get the benefit of those charter schools that are in their parishes. But Bickman Charter School is part of the Morehouse Parish School System, so we get credit. We get credit for their grades and, and their accomplishments. Bastrop High, uh, Bastrop High still has capacity. We've got room for more students at Bastrop High. We could probably easily put a couple of hundred more students there. But we've got, uh, we got three gyms over there. One really nice new gym, that wasn't built too many years ago. We've had improvements to the athletic facility. The new part of Bastrop High School is still, um, uh, very nice. Now, the old part of Bastrop High School, there's a little work to be done there, probably with some wiring and stuff like that. But, uh, but to grow, to, to consolidate the school system, we may have to do this in phases. Initially, right now, uh, what we wanna do is, is get Morehouse, we, we want an elementary school and a junior high on the same piece of property, same campus. But that's, uh, that's basically what I'm hoping we can get down to. The benefits of that are gonna be more manageable district lines. The improved transportation. Way, way more efficient food service. And if we have a brand new, nice, state-of-the-art facility, that will attract certified classroom teachers, and if we, if we can get this done, we can, we could actually have the ability to set, we could possibly set the pay scale for certified classroom teachers higher than Washitaugh Parish or Lincoln Parish. But we have a situation where we just have to get over the hump. The, the, the six or seven million dollars that we could possibly have left over in our budget, at the end of the school year, we, we could easily make a million dollar a year payment, uh, if, if we had to. This is, um, DeSoto Parish, this is just an example. It's an example of kinda what direction we're wanting to go. Now here, uh, here at DeSoto Parish, they, they have the whole school system on one campus. It's all on one campus, high school included. But that, that's it right there. And you can see the, uh, you see how this, uh, school building right here is, uh, how it's set up? They can actually, they've built it in such a way that they can add to it, in other words, they can, additions to it will be very easy. They can actually just extend these wings out further as they grow and get more students. They don't have to change, none of the administration, none of the, they would just extend classrooms in those wings. The, uh, this, this is the middle school administration lobby. All these doors are, the new doors designed for safety, for, um, very nice. That's a picture of the cafeteria dining area. Just a couple of more pictures. Just a couple of more pictures. But anyway, that's, uh, Michael Falk, who was superintendent here, uh, several years ago. He's, um, he's got a facility in the parish where he is now. And he's invited as many of us as would, would like to go and look at the, at the facility that he's got. Uh, he's actually got a third grade through eighth grade facility. And it's two separate buildings, uh, with one cafeteria. This is the way the parish used to be configured. Is that a crazy, is that a crazy district map? I mean, that's, that's what we had. We're no longer under, uh, that court order. The school board now has the authority to change district lines as we see fit. Uh, on the schools that we're gonna keep, Morehouse Magnet School is an A performing school, year in and year out. Uh, it's just a, it's a very good school, still performs at a high level. They won a national award, I can't remember what it was. Blue Ribbon. They won a Blue Ribbon Award, which is a nationwide award. Uh, and, um, but it's, um, uh, most of you know Vicki Carpenter. She would probably have my head if I even uttered. But anyway, it's a, it's a, it's a high, very good, very good performing school. So it'll stay in the, in the, in the system. This is the, this is the first option. Uh, option one is to take Morehouse Junior High, move it to a new location, and then add all the elementary school population to that same campus. Um, we would, uh, now, I'm not, it doesn't, names don't really mean that much to me. I just suggested this. We, we've never had elementary school named Morehouse. Uh, but if we build an elementary school, and it's the only one we have in the parish, to me, that's just the name that it should be. Um, it would be for grades, uh, pre-K, uh, pre-K through fifth grade, or possibly sixth grade. Um, and then the junior high would be six, seven, and eight, or, or just seven and eight. Um, and we would keep the same name. We would still call it Morehouse Junior High. Or possibly Morehouse Middle School. By definition, it's actually a middle school. Um, but, uh, and the campus can be configured in such a way that you've got, you've got one big, nice, state-of-the-art kitchen that divides the two, two buildings. And you go out, you go out the doors on one side of the kitchen, you go into the elementary dining room, elementary serving line. And then you go all the way through the kitchen back out to the other side of the kitchen. You go into the junior high dining room and junior high serving line. And what that does, that keeps the elementary children and the junior high kids completely separate all day long. They never see each other. Uh, and it prevents bullying and, there's a lot of advantages to having a system like that. Uh, the, uh, the, the pickup and drop-off bus lanes would also divide the two buildings. And, uh, option two would be the same as option one that I just went over, but whether or not to throw Delta into the mix or not. Delta Magnet School has got its own East Morehouse Parish tax that's dedicated to Delta Magnet School. And, uh, but we've, uh, uh, when we build a new facility, when we build a new elementary school and a new junior high, we're gonna have to build it with growth in mind. We need to build it big enough that later on, if we had to, uh, if we were to close Delta, we could move those students into the new facility. But this is something that, this is something we've gotta decide. Um, the, uh, and like I said, it's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long-term process. We can't put the whole school system on one piece of property right now. It'd be, I think it'd be too cost prohibitive. But we've got a good high school. We got a good magnet school. Morehouse Magnet School, and we've got, uh, uh, and the district lines. Uh, the district lines for Beekman Charter School would remain the same. And if Delta, if we, if Delta Magnet School remains, and we keep it, uh, its district lines wouldn't change either. But all other district lines would become just one district. And again, that solves a lot of problems by having one district. Uh, because they, it'll reduce our fuel costs tremendously. And kids won't be riding the buses long either. It'll have a shorter ride in the morning and a shorter ride in the afternoon. Uh, the land options, uh, there, there's two pieces of property that came to my mind. Uh, the, uh, the property directly behind Walmart and that strip shopping center. There is a, uh, there's a road that goes just past Turpins. There's a street that goes down behind that little strip center. And of course, you've also got Peach Orchard Road that goes down and also connects to one sixty-five. So it's on a main, it's on a main thoroughfare. Um, and the other piece of property, uh, was some property that was actually considered several years ago, at the corner of McRite and four twenty-five, just north of town. And both of those pieces of property are almost exactly the same distance from the downtown square. Uh, pretty, pretty close. Uh, here's the Walmart property right here. There's the little strip shopping center. There's Walmart. And here's the road. This road is already here. Going back to that property, that ain't where she got Peach Orchard Road right there. And if, if I'm not mistaken, I think this property actually goes back and connects to Cherry Ridge. I mean, I'm sorry, Cooper Lake. So you actually have three points of, of entry, uh, to the, to the property. The, uh, I guess another big advantage to that particular piece of property is that water and sewer, uh, and power's readily available. It, it's already there. I know at one time somebody suggested maybe out off Nav Street, um, that would, that would be a long way from the majority of our population of students. And plus, you'd have to build a, you'd have to build a sanitation system for, for a, for a facility, that being, which would be very expensive. So that would, uh, it's better to find a place that's already have all those services. Um, and there's that property that's behind the, uh, uh, the Subway store, the Chevron store at the corner of McRite and, and, uh, uh, four twenty-five. But we are just at the very beginning stages of doing this. And the school board still has to decide, you know, how we're gonna configure this so that we can begin to sell it to the community. Uh, but that's, uh, the other, I've had a lot of people, uh, you know, I've, I've had a couple of meetings with the mayor. I've talked to legislators. Uh, talked to the, uh, some chamber members. And the big, a lot of, a lot of the questions I kept getting back is, what are we gonna do with the old schools? Well, we're in the business of educating kids. We're, we're not realtors. So I think what we're gonna have to do is, uh, we're probably gonna have to name a subcommittee or a committee to deal with these properties that we're no longer using. As long as these properties are in, are the property, are deeded to Morehouse Parish school system, by law, we have to pay property liability insurance. We have to send somebody out there to mow. We need to clean up, take care of them. These, 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 these pieces of property that we're not using are a cash flow drain on our system. We closed Carver Elementary School on Alm Street, what, nine years ago, about nine years ago? About nine years ago. But we still have it. And we're paying property liability on it every year. And we're sending crews out there to keep it maintained, keep it looking halfway decent. But, uh, we've got to, uh, and, and school, school property is ta, is, school property is tax-consuming property. It consumes tax. We've got about, with, with, um, with South Side Elementary, East Side Elementary, Carver Elementary already closed. And then we closed the other four elementary schools that we're currently operating. Pine Grove, H.B. Adams, Cherry Ridge, and Oak Hill. We'll have seven elementary school properties that are no longer, that we're no longer using. Will probably never use again. And it's about, I think it was a total of about eighty-two acres. I calculated about eighty-two acres. But the property that's actually in the city, oh, that, uh, that property needs to be converted to revenue-producing property. Property tax, sales tax if it's a retail facility. But, uh, the, uh, um, uh, we're not, like, as I said, we're not in the business. We're not in the real estate business. So we need to get some experts to help us move these properties. And we would like for the city to be partners with us to try to figure out a way to do that. Uh, the, uh, um, I think I've already got ahead of myself a little bit, but that's, uh, that's basically, that's basically where we're at. Um, we, um, um, if we can get these old school properties, um, um, if, if we can determine what we're gonna do with them and find a way to help Morehouse Economic Development Board attract some more business, get more business in here. But, uh, we've, uh, uh, Morehouse Parish school system does not belong to the board members. It belongs to this community. And I think all of our, all of our government bodies, if we all work together, I think we can get on the upswing of economic development. And we're gonna do our best to get the kids educated the proper way and get our test scores up. And we're, we're on track to do that. Uh, but I really appreciate your time to let us give the city an update on, on where we're at now and where we're trying to go. Uh, we've got a lot of people outside the parish that are willing to jump on board and help us. And I'm talking about financial help. I spoke with, uh, I spoke with Clarence Hawkins, who is now over at U.S. Department of Agriculture. Of course Clarence said that he's willing to help us do anything we need to do. Um, and also, um, uh, because, because Morehouse Parish is, is actually classified as an economically depressed parish, we, we qualify some, we qualify for some pretty big grants we probably don't even know about. But we're looking, we're looking into that. But I, but our goal ultimately is to try to do this and, and absolutely minimize the amount of tax that we may have to go to the, uh, to the voters and taxpayers in this parish for. But if we wanted to grow, it's, this is what we have to do. Any questions?
What are you gonna do with the school, old school board property?
It, well, the same thing. We've been trying to, we've been trying to get rid of the old school board property too. But, uh, and I mentioned the elementary schools because we, we know we're gonna be closing those if we do this. But we still, we still have Benita.
That's what I was wondering.
We still have College.
And Oak Ridge.
And Oak, yeah, we got property everywhere that we don't need. And it's, that's one of the things that I started thinking about when we got sworn in back in January is we're paying money for all of these pieces of property that we're never gonna use again. And, uh, so we need help from the city and from Morehouse Economic Development Board. These are good pieces of property. If we could, well, one of the thought, one, one of the thoughts that I had was we, we know we could probably get grants for asbestos abatement. And, uh, and once we do that, we could possibly do like IPD. And we'd maybe get some contractors in here to demolish those buildings for the material. A lot of brick in these old buildings, old school buildings. But if, but I think if you have a nice piece of property, you know, East Side's about, East Side's about, uh, East Side's right at, I think, about four acres. That's a nice piece of property. It's right on a main thoroughfare. We, we need to be trying to market that piece of property to somebody. But, uh, um, Eddie, no more questions? I really appreciate it.
I have a question, Rick.
Okay.
You have a ballpark figure on what these would, uh, would be? I mean, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about ballpark.
Well, if we build a new Morehouse Elementary building, a new junior high building, and a new football stadium and baseball field, um, I think we're probably looking somewhere around twenty-five, thirty million dollars. Is that about right?
About thirty.
Yeah. But there's communities our size and smaller that are doing it. And if they're doing it, we can do it. Uh, nobody wants to pay higher property tax or sales tax. But we're, uh, we're in a situation where we gotta do something. And the board, I think all seven of the board members understand, they clearly understand now that this is the direction we have to go. And so I think, um, I think once we get that done, be, uh, you know, probably about every six months or so, I may wanna come back and give you guys, give you guys an update. But I would like to, uh, I would like for the council, maybe at their next council meeting, to maybe have a proclamation of support, just a general proclamation of support, to consolidate our schools. How we ultimately do it, you know, may depend on one or two schools. But, um, would like to, like to have the city, uh, support us in every way. Thank you, gentlemen.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Tixler.
Thank you.
Motion for adjournment.